I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, March 4, 2019 at 6:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, we'd like to amend the agenda to add item 10F, Athletic Field Rental Rights.
Alright. Any other additions or deletions, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with adding the athletic field rental rates.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Clerk Candell. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Approval of minutes, 2/4, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 4, 2019, Board of Trustees meeting as presented. Second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Number five, public announcements. Any public announcements at this time? Please. Please take them for yourself for the record, please.
I will do that.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Van Sweden, and I'm the Superintendent of New Haven Community Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for the work that you do here in Lenox Township, and of course, that affects what we do in New Haven Community Schools. I don't think we take the time very often to say thank you to the people that help make our community a better place. And so, tonight, I also want to thank you for allowing me some time to share some information, some important information, with you about our school district. And I'm very excited about the plan that we have in place, and hope you can join me with that excitement. So, our story really began in 2015 when the district completed a facility assessment. And at that time, we identified all the projects that needed to be done, from top to bottom, inside and outside, from added academics to athletics, from transportation to safety and security, and so on. And so, what we came up with was a bond proposal plan that really supports our six-point strategic plan. That is something that we also have in place in the district. The strategic plan really provides a guide for our story, and our story is really about safety and security, about updating and replacing items in all of our schools and school facilities, and about upgrading the learning environment. So, on February 11, the Board of Education made the decision to place a $25 million bond proposal on the May 7 ballot. And that's what really it's going to take to transform New Haven Community Schools into a 21st-century teaching and learning environment. The bond plan also supports goal one of our strategic plan. And many of you may know what a bond is, but in very simple terms, it's like a mortgage, and what New Haven Community Schools will do is borrow money and then pay it back over time. So, the bond proposal is focused on making significant student safety and security upgrades. It also supports goals five and six of our strategic plan, and that is to develop a financial plan that will accommodate the ups and downs of the state's school funding process. There are four areas to our bond proposal. We have a lot of information on the district website, including an FAQ. We also have our fact card, and I've left some of these at the table at the entrance today. And then, we also have the actual bond proposal. There are four areas, and I want to spend a few minutes talking about some examples of the projects that are going to be completed. First of all, we're looking at student safety and security. We're going to be improving exterior lighting, rekeying locks, replacing doors. And at New Haven Elementary, there is not a secure entry, as there are in our other schools. So, we will be creating that secure entry, so that parents have to be buzzed in and come through the office to identify themselves before proceeding to the school. We're also going to be looking at how we can transform existing space in our buildings, such as media centers, such as pot areas, and other existing areas to really try to mirror what some other work environments are looking like these days. Because it is our responsibility to make sure that our kids are prepared for work, college, and careers of the 21st century. We're also going to be looking at upgrading outdoor space as well, including playgrounds, but also creating learning classrooms outside. We have the beginnings of some of those spaces, but they need to be completed. We're also going to be upgrading the administration building, including the gym. We have a number of groups in the district, as well as outside of the district, that utilize that gym facility, and we need to make that a better place for everyone. We're going to be looking at purchasing equipment to support our K-12 science program, as well as new band instruments for Endeavor Middle and New Haven High School. We're going to be remodeling the band room at the high school. We'll be upgrading the track and bleachers at the high school and at the middle school. But we can't forget about those other items, like the electrical, mechanical, heating and cooling, plumbing, roofing, and I can't forget about our parking lots. Because anybody that has driven through our parking lots these days knows the condition that they're in. We're also going to be replacing flooring inside of our facilities. And again, the website, Under-School-Election Information, on the homepage has lots of information about the proposal. We can't forget about technology. That's the third area that the bond will support. We're upgrading servers and the infrastructure in order to support teaching and learning of the 21st century. So, the other important part about this bond proposal is that it's being done in two phases. So, phase one would begin in 2019, and phase two would begin in 2024. The idea is, is that we will begin to upgrade our technology, but we all know how quickly technology changes. And so, in order to stay current, we will have two refreshes of technology. So, it won't be purchased all at once, but over time, and that way, it won't all get old at the same time. The fourth area is looking at our transportation. Our buses are aging with miles and the wear and tear that some of our dirt roads have on these vehicles. And so, we will be purchasing buses over a period of time as well. And again, just like the tech plan, it'll be done in two phases. Really, in the end, this bond proposal will put the district in a really good position for the next 10 to 15 years. So, on January 11, the district met with representatives at the Michigan Department of Treasury to review our proposal. And I'm very excited to announce that they approved all the projects in the bond proposal. So, again, as I've tried to outline tonight, the May 7 ballot for bond proposal will affect every student, every staff member, and members of this community. So, if approved, the current tax rate will increase by .9 mils. And that means for the average homeowner, that's about $32.40 a year, or about nine cents a day. Many homeowners, of course, will pay less than that. So, on May 7, our voters can make one of three decisions. They can vote yes, no, or not vote at all. One of the important things, I think, for everyone to know, regardless of how you vote, is that absentee ballots will be available after March 23. And for the first time, you won't have to give a reason to vote by absentee. And so, that's a new ruling this year. The other piece that's important is, if you're not a registered voter and you can't get registered before May 7, as long as you're in line by 7:59 PM on May 7, you'll be able to register and then go ahead and vote as well. So, again, I encourage you to go to our website, Under-School-Election Information. We've got a district newsletter that you may have in your homes as of today. Otherwise, it'll be posted on our website, and it's got lots of information about the bond proposal. And I'm getting out to communities and council meetings, just like this, to help share the information. You can also call me or email me, and my contact information is on the back card. It's at the front table. You can also call any principal in our district. And we have board members here tonight. Well, I should say, a current board member, Sue Simon, our board president. And Gina is here, Gina Walker, former board president and longtime board member as well. So, what we don't know is how our story is going to end, but what we do know is that it's time. It's time for this bond proposal for New Haven Community Schools. So, again, I thank you for your time tonight. I know you have a busy agenda. And I look forward to answering any of your questions by phone or by email. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public announcements? Public comment. Any public comment at this time? Yes, sir. State your name, Florker.
My name is Bruce Washington. I live here in Lenox. And I wanted to make comments on two of our topics. One of them is slated as 7H, and it's the planner's report. And I'd just like to make it known that I did meet with several of the members of administration of Lenox Township to talk about the recent vote on planning and make a development into a possible recreational vehicle park. And I wanted to point out that, because they educated me pretty well today about things that are yes or no, and some things have to be determined by the state. But one thing for certain that makes that development, as the plan was written up, illegal, is that Peschawk Road is not a primary nor a secondary thoroughfare. It's a road, even though in the planning committee in the future, they plan on making it into a secondary thoroughfare. So, as such, it's illegal to have an entrance and an exit for RV park onto a regular road, because it's listed in the state of Michigan. It has to be onto a primary or secondary thoroughfare. Then, so, I say that that never came up, because I'm sure people looked at the planning committee's future aspect of the township and not at what MDOT records the street as present. Then, under item 10A, the annual renewal request for a mining permit. I don't think that we should be so straightforward and just say, "This is an annual renewal." At the meeting and at several other meetings, I've heard people say, "Well, they've gotten it renewed now. They've been going on 13 years of digging their pit off of 32 Mile in Peschawk." But I actually brought the papers in, the original papers, when they applied for the permit in 2000, and they were given the permit and started digging in 2001. So, the gravel pit has actually been dug for 19 years. And after five years, they already had started digging the lake, but then they applied for permission to dig the lake from the state of Michigan, and they were approved and given another five-year permit. So, then, that gives them a total of 10 years of permission to dig that gravel pit, dig the lake, and sell all the dirt out of it. And remember, it was only approved originally for five years. So, now, we're going on to a yearly renewal, every year, for an additional nine years. I think before we would go ahead and just give them a quote "annual renewal," we should have a company come in and measure the amount of dirt that's been dug out and sold, to see how much the total ground level has been lowered from 32 Mile, to see how deep the lake is, to see if it is a 22-acre lake, and review all those things to see whether or not that permit should be renewed for another year. You may not remember, but about four years ago, when they were using it as a dump site and nobody knew about it, I did bring in a bunch of pictures to show everybody. They had piled up road debris, asphalt, and cement, piled up in the far back of their property adjacent to mine in Mrs. Boss's property. This was all contaminated road debris, thousands and thousands of tons of it. And when we presented it to the township, they immediately asked them to stop, and they reviewed it. And so, they were closed down for about four or five days till they gave a reason what they're going to do with it, how they're going to dispose it, and the township took appropriate action at that time. And since that time, nobody has complained very much about anything. But I do believe if we do have a reputable company go in, hired by the township, but not by TJ Enterprises themselves to review the amount of dirt that was dug out, that we might find they've already exceeded the amount that they were originally scheduled for back in 2019 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests at or prior to the meeting. In which event, the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Nine below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority, roll call vote of those present and voting.
Orders and bills for this board meeting. We have $361,812.06 in unpaid invoices. Paid invoices for approval are $29,170.10, for a total of $390,982.16.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the approval of the orders and bills in the amount of $390,982.16.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. No items removed from consent agenda, no unfinished businesses, time. Number 10, new business. TJ Enterprises LLC Annual Renewal Request for Mining Permit. State your name, please.
I am Greg Piperzack, representing TJ Enterprises, requesting the annual renewal permit. If you board members, last year, we talked about...
Deputy Clerk, can you open that microphone closer, please, sir? Thank you.
Better. Last year, at the renewal, it was discussed that, before I came before the board this year, we would do a thorough survey on the property. We hired a professional land survey engineering firm, went out and did a complete topo, did a complete sonar on the pond. We presented that information to your township engineer, reviewed it. The results, I think you have the volume results in front of you.
Mr. Safe, I'm going to need you up there, too, please, sir.
And... Results are, we... The accumulated actual volume year-to-date is 2,072,700 yards, and we're permitted for 2,694,000, which puts us above 77%, complete. And just by an eyeball of where we are with the lake in the last little corner, we have to finish mining. I would agree with those numbers. Look pretty accurate. Mr. Safe has any further...
Mr. Safe, you verify that information?
Yes. We've been tracking these volumes since 2000, since the original permit. So, every year, we get records, a copy of their records. The first few years, we actually required surveyed terrain to verify against the removal of the sand. And that was done a few years, and then stopped, and then new was verified. And then, last year, it was verified by their engineer. And they are about 78% of the approved volume.
And you deem that information reliable?
It's submitted by a professional engineer, professional surveyor. Now, we haven't gone out and verified their numbers, but there are licensed engineers and surveyors, and they submitted that information sealed to the township.
Based on what you've seen, is there any reason for you to do it this year?
I don't see a reason. It's just an extra cost to Mr. Piperzack. But if the board would like us to go out, we'll verify these numbers for you.
You have a recommendation?
I would accept the numbers as submitted.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Piperzack? Questions?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of TJ Enterprises LLC annual mining permit as presented.
I'll second that request, that motion.
I have a motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Clerk Candell. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Letter B, Fire Department Commercial Fee Schedule Modification Request.
Good evening, everyone. If I may, right before I discuss this, we had a very unique call last night at approximately 10 o'clock. It's the first in our history in a department in which we were called for a train fire. And in fact, we had 151-car train northbound, and the second locomotive caught fire. Unfortunately for the department, they stopped that, the entire train, right at 31 Mile Road, so we had easy access. And the unique thing about this is just two weeks ago, at the fire department level, we're required to do annual hazardous material refresher training. It's required by Moic Miota, the state of Michigan. And one of the scenarios just happened to be a train car incident with a leak with northwest winds of five miles an hour. Last night, we had northwest winds of five miles per hour. This was a working fire. I called for mutual aid, as well as a special from Selfridge for a crashed tanker foam truck, which they brought, which we fortunately did not need. And it had 4,300 gallons of diesel fuel onboard. And fortunately, none of that was affected. It was actually a mechanical failure in the drive train, which in turn caused the crankcase to get cracked, which caused the fire. And with the help of all our mutual aid agencies, and Jeff from EMS and all his crew, what could have been a very disastrous situation was well-controlled in just under three hours. We did evacuate two homes, one on the east side of the tracks, and most people were brought back about 1:30 in the morning. So, I thought it was very important that the board should know and residents should know that this just occurred. It's never happened. I had a meeting this morning with several training chiefs in the county, and nobody has ever experienced a train fire before. So, just wanted to let you all know how that goes. With that, before the board, you have a request from me to increase the commercial fee schedule. We've been doing this on a four-year basis, and it has been. The last time this was adopted was in March of 2015. So, my proposal is, is increase pretty much across the board, 5%, which is exactly what we've done the last three times that we've raised the rates on a four-year schedule. So, I'll take any questions at this time. Everything that is red is the increase. Everything that is black is the current.
Any questions for the chief?
I have a comment. I think that it's beneficial to the township that we check with our neighboring communities to see how we compare as far as the commercial fees are. And I have not had a chance to do that. I don't think anybody on the board has. So, having said that, I would like to make a motion to table the Fire Department Commercial Fee Schedule modifications until next month, so that we do get a chance to look into our neighboring community fees.
A second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Letter C, DPW Workshop Request. Good evening.
Good evening. In front of you, you should have a request for a workshop that I would like to send my assistant to, John Alavsky. Fortunately, it's in Richmond again. It's to cover cross-connection control basics. This would expand on his current knowledge that he learns in the process of becoming certified. The bonus with this class, if he attends, he will receive a continuing debt for that class as well.
I would make a motion to approve the DPW workshop request for John Alavsky on Wednesday, March 13, in Richmond, at the cost of $165, as requested. A second.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter D, Permanent Park Restroom Request. Mr. Safe.
Good evening, again. I believe all the board members have seen the preliminary plans for the concession building that we're trying to put together. At this point, we'd like the board authorization to move forward to completing these plans and specs, so we can solicit for actual construction permits. And then, again, it would be subject to our recommendation to the board and board approval for contract, the actual contract.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Tri-County Engineering to put the plans into the permanent park restrooms out for bid.
A second.
Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions, discussion? Mr. Safe? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter E, Bay River Planed Unit Development Agreement Amendment. Mr. Casson, is there anything you have to speak to on that? Just a simple amendment.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions?
Make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Bay River Planned Unit Development Agreement as recommended by our attorney, as it has been presented.
A second.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Thank you. Letter F, Athletic Field Rights. DPW Superintendent?
Yes.
Athletic field rate, sir?
Yes. It was asked that some calls be made to our local communities to compare our current fees for athletic field use compared to theirs. Steve actually made the phone calls on these, so he can speak better to those conversations than I can.
Okay. Mr. Casson? Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I made some phone calls, plus did some online search. To be honest with you, the surrounding communities are all over the place. They're from very expensive to no charge, obviously, at all. Some of them allow teams to use the property, provided they're cutting the grass and marking that, which isn't the case in ours. But based on an average, we're recommending both, Mr. Trombley and myself, are recommending a fee of $200 per team per season and a $100 security deposit per team per season. And that's different than typically where you now have the $200 for the league. But it makes sense that you could have a league that has 15 teams playing there.
And to clarify, we'd have an organization come with possibly 16 teams, and they're paying $200.
Yeah, that's just not appropriate.
The wear and tear, the cleanup.
The township is subsidizing costs in that regard. I don't think that's good.
We don't want to make money. We just want to cover our costs. We'd love to have people enjoy our park and our facilities, but we have to cover the cost. So anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, other than the security deposit basically ensures that these groups will pick up cleanup. And then, of course, any excessive damage that...
And once we have teams leave, they leave a mess up. We have to have a worker come in to clean up.
If they pick up after themselves, they're not causing any damage of sorts, their deposit's refundable at the end of the season.
Fair enough.
It's just to help cover our extended costs if need be.
Can I clarify that we're saying per team or age group? Because sometimes it's, when it's a whole bunch of them, they've got six or eight different age groups.
Right. And that's where we're coming from, where, you know, when you say a team, you know, those teams can be broken down into age groups, and that's where some of these fees are not
Anybody have any questions or any recommendations?
I will make a motion that we establish new rate for the athletic field rentals at $300 per team or age group for the year, which includes a $100 refundable park maintenance
I will second.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Kendal, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Public comment? Any public comment at this time?
May I quickly remind everyone in the audience that our April Board and Trustees meeting is going to be at 9:00 a.m. on April 1 because of the emptying conference that
We're all going out of town. And I just want to tell everyone one thing, too. Trustee Clifford did call in, so he is excused. He did give us notice. He's trying to protect everybody. He came down with the flu, and he doesn't want to spread it to everybody, and we appreciate that. So we told him by all means, but he did call and let everybody know what was going on. So I have nothing else. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn at 7:04 p.m.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Meeting adjourned.